Okay, let's open the meeting. We can stand for the pledge. Mr. Burkey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eerie's citizens, does anybody like to speak for three minutes? We're actually going to change up just a little, go to the stadium, rededication of Blotnikoff Field fundraiser. John, I'm going to let you introduce.
Thanks. It's not the field in this case, it's the sign. There's a couple of interested citizens that are here tonight just to tell us what they're hoping that will authorize and enable them to do so that they can proceed to upgrade and improve the sign at the football field at Erie High School, Blotnikoff Sign. And I'll let them explain it, and it won't take us too long, I don't think, so. Mr. Ed Kissel?
Thank you, Mr. Harkins. My name is Ed Kissel, and Doug White and I, along with a few other people, are looking and going to ask the board for consideration at no cost to the school district to look at updating the Blotnikoff Sign up at the Royal High. I went to Tech, the old school, the new one, so I gotta get it right, to update that and ask the board for a resolution for us to proceed to raise funds for that effort. We have talked to Freddie, Doug has, and he has no problem with that. We've talked to one of the graphic artists that's out of Pittsburgh, George Gott, who was also a classmate of Freddie's, who was the NFL photographer for Pittsburgh for thirty-some years, for updated photos and all, that Freddie would look at and then the approval, and then if the board accepts, we know we have to come through the board on everything that is done. So we're just asking for a resolution to proceed with those efforts to do that sign, make it a showcase up on Chestnut East Street.
John? Didn't you tell me that you were aware that some Eastside clubs had gaming money that they might be considering to donate to?
Yes.
And so the resolution, you'd need to allow them to have it to offer?
Yes, we would ask the board for consideration to fund that, the funding that we would get from some of the organizations that come through the school district, and all funding would be administered through the school district as a 501(c)(3), so that we have that in line with any of them that may ask if we are a charitable or non-charitable organization. So in a sense, we're asking the school district to give us permission to use that in our efforts to raise the money.
Through the foundation?
Through the, yes, whatever.
Bobby?
Thank you. Ed, do you have an idea of what it might cost? We've gotten some preliminary estimates from about $6,000 to $12,000. They're all over the board, depending on what you want on that sign and so forth. But again, everything would come through Erica, through the district, so you would know before anything would be done with your approval on whatever is done.
So I imagine the artist would give us a rendition and an idea of what it would cost?
Yes, you'd have both the front side and the back side, in the royal colors, hopefully, on that sign, so that everything ordains with the new school.
Jim, do you?
Thank you.
Just want to ask you, is there, do you see any problem with this, or is there a resolution to be had here?
Thank you, Mr. President. All I wanted to say was, you know, the Foundation for Erie's Public Schools, which I believe is the entity you're referring to, who would accept the funding, does have a separate board and is fully separate and distinct from the Erie School District, so we'd have to go to the Foundation to get their approval as well. We can't dictate to them that they would do this. If the board does want them to move forward with that, I don't have any legal issues with having a resolution authorizing that to occur. I would just suggest that this board put a process in place that you want to have followed in terms of how it would look and things of that nature. And I believe, Erica, you've been working on something relative to that?
Yep. First of all, directly related to the sign is, PEPs has scheduled their next board meeting this week, on the 6th, and it's my understanding that they had already planned to discuss that at that board meeting, but I've had no direct conversations with them as yet, but that is apparently on the agenda for them to take up.
You're talking about PEPs, correct?
No, PEPs.
Oh, PEPs.
Yes.
My understanding is that Mr. Kissel and Mr. White are here because they're very sensitive to wanting to go about this and are respectful of our rules and procedures and proper way to do it, so they just want to set something in motion. On hearing what the solicitor says, is there something we can put on the agenda that's generic enough to launch the project with acknowledgement that everything is subject to come back to us for approval, financial and appearance wise? Is there something that we could launch the effort with?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we maybe put a committee together to work on the processes that would need to be in place that the solicitors suggested?
So to resolve the immediate concern regarding whether we can have a, whether the board could consider a resolution that's generic enough, Mr. Harkins? The answer would be yes, if you so desire. I'd be happy to draft one that would authorize a fundraising effort. If the board wanted to move forward with some sort of committee to ordain a process as to how that would move forward for approvals and reviews and considerations, I know that this board has been very sensitive in the past to such matters. We can reference then that, you know, the process would be determined by a future action of the board or something to that effect. But yes, Mr. Harkins, we could do a resolution authorizing the fundraising, you know, working with, in partnership with PEPs. We'll know by the meeting on the 11th what their response will be.
I'm hopeful.
We would expect. So I think all those pieces would be in place, and if the board wants to do a committee or just let me know what the process is for approval and consideration, we'll put that in there.
I think what I'd like to see is just something that launches the effort and authorizes them to proceed with the understanding that they would have to come back to us, as they've said they wanted to do, for approval, every aspect of it. And then a committee can exist if the board sees fit, but I'm just trying to make it move.
So would it be appropriate then if we were to have a resolution to have it start with something to the extent of resolved by the Board of School Directors of the school district of the city of Erie, that the effort being led by Mr. Kissel and Mr. White to fundraise for the purpose of refurbishing, redesigning, replacing the sign at Blotnikoff Field is an effort that is endorsed by the school district, by the Board of School Directors of the school district of the city of Erie?
Authorized?
Authorized, endorsed?
Endorsed, I think would be a better word.
Well, there's nothing to endorse.
In my mind, like we said, as far as the fundraising effort, we're a separate entity. So that board has to make those decisions as far as the fundraising of it, but as far as approval of the process, I think that we endorse, we endorse the process of what Mr. Kissel and Mr. White are trying to do. I certainly endorse everything, because I drive by the sign and shake my head every day, so I'm always angry.
And I think that the importance of this letter is for them to be able to go to say a club and say, here's a letter, because sometimes they need something saying that you're allowed to do it, or what you're getting the money for, or whatever it may be.
Your resolutions usually at your board meetings, I've been to a number of them already, would be to endorse our efforts with the understanding that there'd be no charge to the taxpayers of the city.
Right.
And if we have to go before the other board, a recommendation by this board that we talk to the other board to get, hopefully, their concurrence, so both boards or both organizations are up to knowledge of what we are trying to do, and then come back again when the process, whatever we do for this, be approved again by both, so that everybody is happy.
Yeah, that's your problem, sir.
Okay, I'm okay with what I'm hearing from everybody.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Sir, can I ask one more question, because it's been lurking out there, and I ask it every now and then, and I, no one seems to know. When Fred Blotnikoff was honored by ESPN and the NFL for being a Super Bowl MVP, the ESPN crews went to each city where every Super Bowl MVP, Hall of Fame member had been, and honored them and gave them a plaque and a golden football and, you know, recognition of their high school. But there was also to be some attached money given to the school, and I don't know how much it was, or how much it is, and what's involved in it, but it's just something I keep hearing as having been ignored potentially in my eyes, so I don't know.
Or whether it was already given, you don't know that either.
That's what I don't know.
Right.
I don't assume that it has been, and I don't know what the parameters of that money to be given was, but I just think, if there's money to be given, I don't want us to ignore it or overlook it.
Mr. President, I just remember in the last meeting we had, and I don't know the details, it was discussed that there was a grant from the NFL Hall of Fame for up to $250,000.
Yeah, I remember you saying something.
That's what it was.
And it's a year-long process, and I think, Erica?
Was there a question about whether we had to be in an NFL market to receive that?
I think that's being looked at right now. I don't know the details behind it.
I thought the NFL, being the NFL, everybody was in the market. We were in Buffalo's. By the way, as an aside, we're the only city in America that's within 100 miles of three NFL teams, but we're officially in Buffalo's market, that's why we get locked out.
One good.
Anyway, could somebody just look into that with Tom, how Tom described it, and see if there's any money that we can obtain under that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mr. President? Just one second, Mr. Kissel. Just to kind of bring this to a head, resolved by the board, my proposed language, it would be resolved by the Board of School Directors of the school district, that the effort led by Mr. Ed Kissel and Mr. Doug White to undertake a fundraising effort to raise the funds to update and replace the sign at Blotnikoff Field is hereby endorsed by the Board of School Directors. Further, the administration is directed to work with interested directors to develop a process for design and construction approval.
And no cost to taxpayers for that?
No cost to taxpayers.
Unless they want to donate.
Mr. Harkins, does that meet your request? Mr. Kissel?
Yes, that's fine.
I think Pam's got a little information on this, too.
Mr. Harkins, I was principal when that happened. I have the football. I actually had Fred sign it the last time he was here, so it's actually autographed. We didn't get any money, so I don't know.
Well, I heard it was.
I have all the paperwork and everything they gave with the football, but yeah, no check.
Is it a gold football?
It is a gold football.
No, I mean a true gold football.
No, it's painted gold. No, it's not solid gold.
What's it going on eBay?
Or they sold it on eBay, either. I have it in my office.
Pam, if there is money that we could do something to obtain, that's, I mean, I believe you that we didn't obtain.
Yeah, we didn't get any.
But if we are entitled to it by their requirements of current, if we just don't want to miss the chance.
Sure. I'll dig out the paperwork and look and see if there was anything listed, but I don't think there was.
Well, in the letter from Roger Goodall, the commissioner of the NFL, which is the letter addressed to Pamela there, it says, "Through his membership in the Super Bowl High School honor roll, you also will receive an NFL charter education curriculum and are eligible to apply for a grant from the NFL Foundation to help support your football program. Please go to the website."
Sounds worth exploring.
This is back in...
Just let her get a copy of it, maybe she could still go there and research it from there.
And Freddie's wife, Angela, has been very instrumental in helping push this, so she is the effort behind Freddie doing this.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cam? We will move on to strategic plan update.
Yep. So we wanted to update you tonight on what we have planned for the upcoming year for the strategic plan process. Instead of having our team members get up and share what they're doing, we thought we'd run our opening day video, which includes all that information and showcases the great work that Andy and Don do as part of the IMD department.
Good morning and welcome back. As you know, 2018-19 marked a turning point for the district. Last year, with our strategic facilities and financial plans as a guide, we began a process of repairing the damage done by the years of budget cuts. We began renovations on our buildings, with work being done at Harding, Wilson, Jefferson, McKinley, Lincoln, Collegiate, and Vet Stadium. We selected and began implementation of new curriculum at the elementary level, and finally, using a building-level fair funding formula, we invested additional resources in schools with the greatest need, and we let building-level teams choose how to use those resources to best meet their building-level action plans. I'm pleased with the progress we've made this year and very excited about what's coming for 2019-20. And here to tell you more about that are our pillar team leads. It's their job to coordinate the strategic plan initiatives across the district.
Hi, I'm Nora Dolak, Director of Curriculum and Assessment for our school district. I've been asked to tell you a little bit about my part in the strategic plan. I'm working with Pillar A, which is Equitable Access to Standards-Aligned Instruction. With Pillar A, there's a great deal of work going on, and I've been asked just to tell you about one great thing we've done in 1819 and one thing we're looking forward to doing in the next school year. So over the 1819 school year, we worked with committees to adopt two brand-new curriculum resources for our K-5 buildings. One is literacy, the Literacy Resource CKLA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts, and the other is a math resource, which is Ready Mathematics, and those will be implemented starting this school year. Over the course of the next school year, curriculum work that we'll be moving forward with includes middle school mathematics, which is going on right now. It will also include middle and high school English Language Arts and high school biology, geometry, and algebra courses. So a great deal of curriculum work will be going on that we can look forward to hearing more about soon.
Hi, everybody. I'm Erica Erwin. I handle communications for our district, and I'm leading our efforts this year on Pillar B, which is all about creating safe environments and strong relationships. We spent a lot of time and energy this year implementing training for behavior supports in our classrooms and throughout our buildings. We're going to do a lot more of that in the coming year, including expanding our peer mediation. And we're also very excited that for the first time this year, 100% of our students are going to be asked to participate in a meaningful community service project, something I'm excited about, I hope you are, too.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Teresa Zmogala, Director of Human Resources. I'm the lead of Pillar C, Results-Focused Professional Learning. One of the items we worked on in 1819 was professional development for the implementation of the elementary curriculum in math and reading. One of the things we look forward to in the 1920 school year for Pillar C is to move the professional development through the middle school and the high school, and also address the needs of all goal teams in the strategic plan and work on that throughout the 1920 school year.
Hi, I'm Paulit Zagorski, the District Assessment Coordinator and lead to Pillar D, Data-Informed Continuous Improvement. This past year, one of our greatest accomplishments was the establishment of our district-wide data summits. This year, we're going to be implementing a new DIBL system that provides immediate feedback to our teachers, students, and administrators.
Hi, everyone. Welcome back to the new school year. I'm Bea Hbersky, the Assistant Superintendent, and I'm here today to tell you a few things about the coming year. First of all, our elementary schools are taking on a big endeavor. We do have our new illiteracy program, CKLA, and our new math program, Ready, and our schools, all 10, will be doing the exact same work in those areas. So congratulations for all the hard work, and we know that you can do that piece. The other piece I want to share with you today is about our 6th through 12th grade, which would be our pathways. And there are five pathways that the state of Pennsylvania has initiated as pathways that all of our schools in the state of Pennsylvania should be using. And the first pathway is human services, and that's the one I'm going to share a little bit about with you today. This pathway is designed to cultivate students' interests, their skills, and experiences for employment in careers that are related to the family and the human needs. So are your students interested in working with people? Food preparation, teaching, or counseling? Can they communicate well or work with teams? And do they enjoy helping and protecting others? If so, our high schools can prepare our students for careers in this particular area. And the poster that you're about to see shows the various jobs that they can have after they leave Erie's Public Schools.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dana Gilmore, the Dean of the Visual and Performing Arts Magnet School up here at the Collegiate Academy, and I'm going to speak today on the Arts and Communications Pathway. And the pathway is designed to cultivate students' awareness, interpretation, application, and the production of visual, verbal, and written work. So are your students interested in news reporting and writing, or acting, or maybe performing in a band or a choir, or studying anything in the performing arts beyond high school? Can your students maybe sing, play an instrument, act, draw, or sculpt? Or do your students enjoy writing, making videos, working with sound effects, or working with computers? Well, if you answered yes to any of those questions, your students may want to consider a career, maybe entry-level model, radio operator, filmographer, floor designer, newsroom worker, or for technical school, maybe an actor, an animator, a musician, a DJ, web designer, a desktop publisher. Or if you want to do a professional four-plus years of college, art or music teacher, film editor, a curator, a producer, a director, a news broadcaster, a copywriter, or telecommunications, or maybe even more than that. So that's certainly something for you and your students to work together toward, should they be interested in Arts and Communications. Thank you very much, have a good year.
Jim Viera, I am the Dean of Collegiate Academy. I'm here to talk to you about the various pathways. The one pathway we're going to talk about this morning is Engineering and Industrial Technology. Our pathway is designed to help students figure out careers in technologies, develop and maintain physical systems. Perhaps your student's interested in some type of engineering, design and architecture, computer technology, going into careers that may involve engineering, for example, chemical engineering, civil engineering, industrial engineering, architectural work. This pathway is for you and your students.
Hi, my name's Pam McCowsky. I'm the Director of Career and Technical Education for the school district. The pathway I'm going to speak to you about today is Business, Finance, and Information Technology, also known as BFIT. Do you have students that are interested in business, sales, computers, and technology, telecommunications, or advertising? Can they work easily with others, pay attention to details, and solve problems? If so, they might be interested in careers in customer service, payroll, tax preparation, paralegals, marketing managers, or certified public accountants. This is the pathway for them.
How you doing? My name is Don Orlando. I'm the principal at Erie High. My pathway that I'm going to discuss with you today is our Science and Health Pathway. This pathway is designed to cultivate students' interests in life, physical, and behavioral sciences. In addition, it involves planning, managing, and producing of therapeutic services, diagnostic services, health information, and biochemistry research and development. So if you have students that are interested in healthcare environment, and they can pay attention to detail, and they enjoy working outdoors with wildlife, this might be something that we would have them do. Sample careers would be hospital worker, dental hygienist, or an athletic trainer. We have all of these pathways available to all of our students in Erie's Public Schools.
Welcome back, everyone. I am Neil Brockman, the Executive Director of Operations, and just wanted to give everyone an update on our facilities plan. Now that you're all back, you'll see that we've got updated roofs at Harding and Wilson, new parking lots at Lincoln and McKinley, and we've started the first year of our Warm, Safe, and Dry Initiative. This upcoming year should be a good year for facilities plans. We hope to continue work on elementary roofs across the district, as well as major renovations at Erie High and Collegiate, including updates to the HVAC system at the A and B wings in Erie High. So welcome back, and we look forward to these changes.
Well, I hope you're as excited about 2019-20 as I am. Because my cheerleading skills are still emerging, I'm going to leave you with some experts. Thank you for all you do for the district, and have a great school year.
Welcome back! Ready, go! R-O-Y-A-L-N, Royals, Royals, G, Royals, Royals, G!
Is there any questions on the content that you want to go into detail about?
I just said that I thought that it would have been nice for all of the people that were in it to have done the cheering.
Well, we did film something like that, but it got cut.
Okay. Curriculum timeline, Mr. Hbersky?
So on the same lines as what the video shared, I do have the timeline that we're using for this coming school year, so I'm going to pass them down. If you take one, it looks at the robust amount of work that's going to be done this year, and Nora is spearheading the entire piece that deals with all of the curriculum. So I give kudos to Nora for all of her hard work from the literacy and math of two curriculums that we did for K-5. But when we look at this, one of the things we see, as you'll see, we're going to be doing 6 through 12, both math and literacy, 6-12. And so we also have asked Pam McCowsky and the team at Erie High, some of the administrators there, to be leads in the high school work and some of the 6 through 8, 6 through 12 work that we're going to be doing. So Nora will be spearheading, overseeing it all. However, we'll have a few of the committees that will be Pam, Courtney Laver, and Steve Schott are going to be working with us on that, as well as getting the middle schools with our new middle schools, meaning Andrea Gloystein and Rick Schneider, and their teams together to support the middle school curriculum that we're going to be doing. So we are using the same pattern that we use for literacy and math with our elementary schools, where we use Ed Reports. We did some research on it. The committee gets together, they do a rubric, they go and see classrooms, see what's happening in the room, and then determine what that rubric's going to look like, and then check on the vendors and have vendors come in, and then we'll present to superintendent and the board the recommendations by the committee after we review everything as well. I also am going to be sharing with you the task reports that we gave in the past. This one is sharing all of the people from Central Office. Who is the person to call if you're dealing with student teaching? Who is the person that you call if you're dealing with curriculum? Who do you call for this, and all of the different pieces? We find that this is very helpful because there are so many tasks that the people in Central Office do, and this is supportive of our building, so the building doesn't have to, well, who do I call? Especially a brand-new administrator, a brand-new teacher. Who do I call if I need something? This will give them a very clean, delineated area of who to call for any of that.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions?
One of the things we had talked about before, just kind of mentioned it. One of the things we had talked about before, just kind of mentioned it, I don't even know if it was in a meeting or if we had just talked about it in the hallway, I can't even remember now. But getting something like this with the breakdowns of the schools that we had handed out before, I think I talked about it maybe with Brian, just so we know like what each pathway, like, I mean, just so the breakdown of all the different curriculums, activities of the schools, that we could have that. That makes, just the community programs, everything, like kind of outline the district.
Sure. And I think we may have a template, because we, I think we did that last year. So we have to look and see if we have a template and then update it for this current year.
Because there's been a lot, there's been so many updates. And then this being an election year, we've got new board members coming on, and I would love to just have that ready for them, too. It's only a few months away. I know that would be a huge asset for them, just to kind of learn, rapid-fire.
Sure.
We will try to have that for you for next week.
That's a big undertaking, so if it's not next week, I completely understand.
October? Well, shoot. But if we have the template, we can see the upper part of the building. Like, for example, we added Perry, and Harding, and Deal are all community schools, whereas last year they weren't. So that would be an addition for something like that.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President? I just, I know Bea knows this is near and dear to my heart, so I'm just curious as to what the participation was for the voluntary math sessions this summer. Did you have a good turnout for the make and take on the elementary level?
Nora? We had more than we could accommodate.
That's wonderful.
I mean, we actually had to have a waitlist.
Okay.
In case people couldn't come, so we could fill in for the waitlist. And yeah, there were over 100 people who responded.
So I guess I just want to say that I think that's an excellent tool that we've used in the past, and maybe we can do more of that.
The other thing, we are going in next week with the company from CKLA. They're going to come in, and we're going to go and do some walkthroughs through the 10 buildings. My hope is that maybe by November, we could have some, if board members would want to see CKLA or Ready Math in action, to be able to take you into the classrooms and show you the material, show you what they're learning in relationship to the curriculum that we're using. So we'll try to plan something for the board if they're interested in going into the buildings.
That'd be great. I just know that in the, you know, years ago, we had the ILT teams, and they used to do a lot of that, teacher, training teachers, and sharing sessions. And I know that Neil and I both went through the DMI classes, which were really great, too. So I'm just glad to see we're getting, having the ability to get back to that kind of work.
Don?
How many, how many of the schools are there now?
There are eight in the school district.
And they're all, you have, you have Wilson?
Two middle schools. Wilson is not. So it's Strong Vincent and East, and then it's Edison, McKinley, Piper Burley, Perry, Deal, and Harding.
Okay. Thank you. PSBA 2020 elections, the board will vote for candidates who are running for PSBA leadership positions at next Wednesday's board meeting. Please review the candidate information that was emailed to us on August 27. Prepare to vote for your selection next Wednesday's committee and the whole.
Mr. President?
Yes?
The only office that has more than the number of positions, I mean, there's one person for each position, running for each position, except for the School Board Secretary, Foreign Steering Committee, and there are four candidates running for three positions. Two of those candidates either failed to get their bio in on time, or something went wrong. So there's only bios for two of the candidates. So I guess I would like to recommend to the board that we either just vote for those two candidates that put their bios in, or Tyler and I both went and tried to get on the internet and get as much information as we could about the candidates. The one candidate that, of the two, that didn't put in a bio is from the, and I'm going to mispronounce and slaughter this, Chedleham?
Chiltonham.
Thank you. Chiltonham, School District, outside of Philadelphia. She is actually a board secretary for that district. The other board secretary is a board secretary for Intermediate Unit 49, which is out of Pottsville, PA. So I feel like the demographic of Chedleham is more in line with our school district. Although, I'm a big believer in IUs, because I'm on that board, that would be my recommendation that we do. Either we have Crystal, Bethany, Ziegler, and Jennifer Davidson, or we just go with Bethany, Ziegler, and Jennifer Davidson, because they put in their bios.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I guess I would just also like to say, so we take a lot of information, a lot of recommendation for PSBA. And the fact that we had to just literally like almost turn into creeper-stalker mode to find any information on the candidates that they just recommended for us to vote on is a little more than frustrating. So I think that it's not a hard ask of us, that if they're going to ask us to vote, which we should be, because they're giving us so many recommendations, that we be able to readily access information on the candidates that are at least running. I think that that should be an expectation for them with hosting, that the profiles are putting the information out, is that the data be collected, or at least something be somewhere. It was, it was a very frustrating experience, because I don't want to just throw a dart and hope that it hits the right candidate. I would like some, a way to track down information on some of the candidates. Either that falls on them, or that falls on the candidates themselves. But I guess I just wanted to make note that I think that this, and this is every election that we, we were asked to vote on stuff, we can't find anything about any of the candidates. Do with that information whatever you want.
Thank you. Cafeteria bank account.
It's a long walk. How you doing, everyone?
Good.
So currently, our cafeteria cash account is held at Citizens Bank. There's a little over $2 million in there. And there's a few issues with this. One, there's a lot of fees that we pay every year, and it's not really user-friendly. We have trouble getting, you know, information quickly when we need it. For example, our relationship manager is in Rhode Island, not even here in Europe. So we have trouble pulling in folks. So on that note, Erie Bank had come to us with a proposal to take over the funds in that account. And it's going to provide all the things that we need. So it's basically going to give us the instant access we need to information, and give us a relationship manager here in town in Erie. And it not only will get rid of all the fees that we pay, it'll pay us a little bit of interest, too. So all in all, it will save us a fund of about $20,000 annually. So if that's all right with everyone, that's stuff that we'd like to take.
Don, hard to disagree with that, but I can't believe we weren't having an account of ten, that was getting interest wherever it was.
I agree with you. Well, I, I know from prior years that the reason the funds were at Citizens Bank is they were the only ones that would accept change in their deposit. So when we were collecting lunch money from students, they were the only bank in town that would take that.
That was probably 20 years ago.
Yeah. So that's not an issue, I think, more.
Right. And this is one of those legacy things that we're now starting to get into, as we're out of our financial crisis and are able to get, really dig into the finances and find different ways to save money. So, and again, I think it was, it wasn't that long ago that we did collect cash before we had all of our students 100% free. So that, you know, it was necessary a couple of years ago, but again, with everything that was going on with trying to keep the doors open, it's something that we hadn't had a chance to get to until now.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Have we talked to any of the banks? Have we shopped around? Are we getting the best deal from our local banks? So are they the only bank that wants to do this?
They were the only bank that stepped forward. We don't have any quotes from another institution.
Didn't solicit any, or did?
No, this was the first and only one. I mean, if we do, we get a couple more.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Well, I said that I do recommend going to somebody local. Preferably, we get a local guy, a local organization to deal with, rather than.
That would be, that would be a challenge first.
I know, not in the matter of getting to Erie Bank, we use them for work, and spot-on customer service, that needs other than your own. It's nice to have somebody local, hey, you know, can you help me? They help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything on new business?
Mr. President?
Yes?
There are two items that we would like to add to the agenda for the September 11 meeting. Well, one I'd like to add, and one I'd like your board's discretion on, the first of which is, Mr. Brockman has some information on the Edison Fire Panel.
So late last week, I think it was Wednesday afternoon, we got word that the fire panel that works all of the alarms at Edison was non-operational. So within a matter of close to 24 hours, we had three separate quotes come in from three separate entities, because we knew that school actually wouldn't be able to have started on Tuesday if that fire panel wasn't in and we didn't have something operational. It wouldn't be up to code. So we solicited three individual quotes, and the one that came in the lowest was through Master Fire, who is the company that we have a professional service agreement with to actually service and keep our fire panels up to date. They're the ones that come in and inspect it. The, their price was just under $24,000. So obviously, because it was over the original threshold, it should have been bid out. However, because it was an emergency, and we wouldn't have been able to open school, we're going to apply to PDE to waive the bidding process. So at this point, we would like to add that to the agenda for the 11th, so that we can retroactively award the contract, and Master Fire can be paid for the very speedy turnaround on the work that they provided.
So as Mr. Brockman noted, this is an emergency contract. The superintendent did notify PDE that we would be implementing our emergency contracting procedures. We did have the necessary three quotes. It's a notice filing with the state once it's done. So that will be added to the agenda for Erie High, I think, consideration. The last item is we were contacted by the Greater Calvary Church requesting a proclamation honoring Ms. Claudia Noli, who was a art teacher for the school district of the city of Erie for 15 years, and is being promoted as a legend in gospel music throughout the Erie community. And they're having an event on October 5th. I believe that she also sang at your board secretary's wedding. Is that, is that correct?
She did.
Yeah. So if that would be all right with the board, we could put together a proclamation honoring her professional achievements and dedication to the community.
Anybody else care what's happened?
Yeah, her daughter inboxed me. I'm going to tell you, like, she's, she, at, can, the celebration service is October 5th at 5:00 PM at your church. And yeah, she was just saying that she taught music in the district, and I know her, she, she taught me a little bit, because I went to her, seeing lessons myself, so I, I don't see nothing wrong with that at all. I would want it.
So Ms. McThere, if I can give you a few after the meeting, we can have a conversation about some of the details.
Okay.
And then we'll put something you got up for consideration next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And we have to do the stadium rededication. Erica, please.
Good evening, everybody. So with the new renovations at the stadium and the installation of the new turf, and also, just as a way to reaffirm the stadium's importance to many different constituencies in the city, we thought it would be an opportune time to do a rededication ceremony. And so we are planning that for October 12th, Saturday, October 12th, which is the homecoming game and the first actual Erie Royals home game there. So we hope you can all attend. We're planning an event that will include some speakers. We were just now, earlier tonight, notified, Mr. Spiegel reached out to General Michael Dunleavy to be a keynote speaker, and so he's accepted. And so we're excited to have him speak, along with several other members of the community to be determined. We will, plans include to have a VIP section on the veranda at Collegiate to have some refreshments while people watch the game. And most importantly, we hope this will be an event that really helps instill and boost pride in, in the stadium, in the high school, and in our district and the city in general. So as part of that, Donnie Orlando has come, and his team there have come up with the Gold Rush concept. It's kind of like a Penn State white-out, where we're hoping everybody will be dressed in, in Erie High yellow. We're going to have some shirts available and some towels, so we're really hoping to pack the stands. We're going to have regular ticket sales, but also pre-sales with hopefully some incentives for students, families, and the community to purchase tickets, but also these promotional items, like the towels and t-shirts. So stay tuned for more details on that. They'll be coming shortly. Our next kind of planning meeting is coming up next week as part of the agenda. We're going to hopefully also have a performance or presentation by the ROTC. We'll have the color guard, band, all of that is kind of on the agenda. I think that's it. Also, maybe an appearance by the new Erie High mascot, so stay tuned for that. So let's see. Anybody have any quick questions? I will get you more details as we flush those out.
Thank you.
One more item while I have you guys here about kind of, again, on helping build pride. We are about to launch, you'll soon see a billboard campaign at sites across the city. And our first kind of push is, in coordination with this, aimed at boosting pride and visibility and interest in Erie High. The timing is such that we thought we could do that very well by focusing on our fall sports teams. So you will soon see our city, our team, featured on billboards across the city. These represent students from all of the fall sports, boys' and girls' sports, and the message is hopefully one of kind of, again, unity and pride and kind of inclusiveness, that this is not just Erie High, but our Erie High, your Erie High, together, we're in this with our teams.
Which are two of our stars for Erie High, were on the football magazine, and all the country pairs that noticed that.
Awesome. We'll start promoting that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody have any other matter? Do you have to have an executive session?
Real quick, Mr. President?
No, no.
No, real quick. I think it would be worthwhile to have a discussion of the community at the whole next time, just about the ban on backpacks or the change on backpacks, because I know a lot of parents are talking about it, just like the hoodies last year. I think it will be important for us to maybe just understand all the reasoning why, so that as board members, when we are approached, that we have an answer, or just so that we can have discussion about it.
Some of the ministers from Erie High incoming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's recess. We'll go to room three for executive session.